Hi Kelsey. These are the nice people from Nantucket. My colleague Kelsey.
Are we ready?
We are ready. It looks like everyone's here.
All right, I'll call the third piece of our strategic planning session to order. We're meeting remotely due to COVID-19 and where the requirements of the open meeting law being in a physical location have been waived and there is public access via the Zoom webinar. I'll turn it over to you Julia.
Thank you so much. Well, appreciate you all getting back together today. When we finished on Tuesday, we were kind of in what I call the messy middle. We had done some brainstorming and everyone probably felt a little, some people may be energized, other people may be overwhelmed just by the sheer dynamics of the conversation. And of course, doing everything by Zoom makes it complicated, less personal and somewhat exhausting. So we had a chance to hear from you all as individuals in terms of what was important to you and how the strategic plan was coming together. But at this point, what I would say is what we've heard is what each of you, what's important to each of you, but we haven't heard what's important to the board as a collective yet. And so that's the direction that we want to try to get to today to provide some guidance to the town administration on where, you know, what gets added to the strategic plan in the coming year. So this again has been historically a three-year plan and we want to make sure you all have the opportunity to integrate new things in a way that that makes sense and that it's achievable for for the organization. I had sent some materials either Tuesday night or Wednesday morning, I think Tuesday night perhaps. And I don't know if y'all had a chance to review them. I have a gold star here for Matt Fee who got his back to me. So Matt, if I could put this on you, I'd give it to you, but just know that I have a star just for you. So I did hear back from Matt in terms of his comments. But we'll want to go through where we are with the potential updates to the strategic plan and then again, get a sense of of board priorities. I'm going to introduce to you my colleague Kelsey Engel King. Kelsey's in our Charlotte office and she's going to help with some technology as we go through this today because we can't do sticky dots on poster paper on the wall in Zoom, but we have a workaround. And so Kelsey is going to help us with that to get a sense of priorities. So why don't we just check in and let's hear from each of you kind of what you what you hope to, where you hope to be by six o'clock when we finish this evening's meeting. Besides perhaps having a glass of wine. All right, Matt, I'll just call on you. What are you hoping? Where are you hoping we get to tonight?
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
No, I I hope we, you know, finalize the list and make it a little clearer what we, you know, would like to have accomplished this year.
Sounds good. I'll just go around my screen. Everyone's screen is different. So it's like potluck. You won't know who I'm going to next, but I've got Dawn next on mine.
Um, I'd like to build a little bit more consensus if we can on on the top priorities and the things that we can accomplish over the next three years going forward and reprioritize the the things that we've already had underway in regard to the new goals. I'm not sure that it's realistic to get there today. I I am finding this format a lot more difficult in terms of building collaboration and and consensus. And I'm hoping that we can that we can schedule an in-person before we absolutely finalize what we're committing to. But yes, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you very much. Melissa?
Um, I I think like Dawn, I'm finding this format challenging. And I don't know about anybody else, but by the time I got this and had a very full day on Wednesday and this morning, with all the other competing priorities we have plus our jobs, I didn't get to sit down to do this prioritization until 3:50 this afternoon. So I'm even looking at this going, how much care and thought, you know, does this actually represent for me on these priorities that are going to guide us over the next few months? So I don't even really feel confident that what work I did turn in is actually reflective of what I think the values are. And that may be because I was rushing to do an assignment among everything else that we've got going on right now.
Well, I did get yours and Jason's. Okay, so a couple more stars, maybe silver, not gold, but good job. Thank you both.
But I I agree. I think it will be nice to have some consensus. I think the reality is that there are a lot of competing priorities and we cannot focus on them all at the same time. They can't all rise to the level of immediate action. And so getting that consensus as a group about, you know, what are the next three to five things that are, you know, really areas that we can focus on? And I'm I'm wondering if we're talking about sort of like short-term, midterm, long-term when we talk about the plan, because some of these priorities may have been lower on my list because I think they'll need a longer runway or can take a longer runway. Other things that I put in as top priority may be things that I think need to be addressed or at least, you know, remediated now. So those are just some of my thoughts.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Kristi, to you.
Thank you. I'm the worst at following instructions, so I did prioritize things. I just didn't send it to you. So I apologize for that. Um, I think that Melissa and Dawn really covered it, that there's a lot of competing things and I think it's been a little bit difficult to do this via Zoom. When I was looking at this this morning, I thought it even things that I was really pushing for on Tuesday about funding affordable housing, I started to look at some of the other things and thought, okay, is this really a priority during COVID? And so it's, I keep saying, how do we look long-term and short-term at the same time? So hopefully by the end of today, we can start to think of a process for that.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
Thank you. To not repeat what everybody said, I'll try to go a different direction, but I agree with Dawn and Melissa on, you know, I thought this would be would be a certain way and it was it was more difficult. But I, looking over those goals, to me, it goes into two categories. It goes into communications and then DEI work. And there was one additional, almost like an action step for housing, which is already well-moving. So I think with communication and, you know, equity work, I think I would like at the end of this, I'd like to to see like, okay, what things are already in motion? Doesn't take a lot of staff time. We can do that. We can get this started in a year. And what's going to take, you know, three years? And and we want to do all of these. So what can we do within those realms of the equity work and the in the communications? To me, the communications will, I'll take a long time to integrate. That's, yeah, it's a lot. It's a lot of extra work and planning and trying to understand kind of what we've been through in this last year. But I think this, what came out of this was, we opened our first two hours with, you know, what's happened? Let's, um, let's look at the last six or eight months. So the goals kind of came out of that and we didn't really dig into transportation, housing as much. I think that's how it was framed in all of our minds. So this is new things came out of that because that's how it was framed in the beginning. And so, yeah, I I think at the end of this, I'd like to have a better sense of what's realistic in one to three years and what's like more maybe five or 10.
All right. Libby? You're on mute, friend.
Sorry. I saw this as I was coming into the meeting and I had meetings just about every hour today. So I've given zero thought to it and I really apologize for that, but I couldn't work it.
Janet?
I hope by the end of today, whenever we finalize the the next, the priorities, that I have a sense of where I need to focus the coordination work to move the strategic plan forward.
Awesome. And Rachel?
I don't feel like I have anything new to add. It's mostly to prioritize what's there and then just get an understanding of what's realistic.
Great. All right. Well, I'm with you guys. Strategic planning and governance work by Zoom is not my favorite. Grateful we can do it and give it a try, but we know it would be much richer in person. So what I'm going to do, just for some context setting, since I haven't really had time to look at any of the emails that just came in and not all of you had a chance to do this, what I want to do is essentially kind of say where I think we might be at the end of of the day on Tuesday, kind of where I think we landed in this messy middle, and then see of the nine things that potentially are there, get a sense of priority. And we're going to use some technology to do that. But let's first just kind of walk through where where we are. So I'm going to share my screen. And here, here we go. Sorry, find you guys here. So many screens. Okay. Great. So the first thing that we did was address the kind of opening framework statement and we added the words equity and inclusion to that to kind of pick up on the spirit of of that being such an important priority for the board right now and for the organization as well. Housing, no change to the goal statement. We have the existing goals, goal one, which deals with, you know, 40B and achieving safe harbor status. Goal two, the a a plan for town employees. Goal three, which is about the, you know, the affordability levels. And goal four, identify incentives to encourage homeowners to use secondary dwellings as year-round rentals. There was some comments from the board about, we need to also discourage conversion of some of these properties to year-round. And I thought it was interesting, having gone back and looked at the staff update on those first four goals. And one of the things the staff suggested was maybe we need both a carrot and a stick. So we have the incentive. And then I think that the stick, so to speak, is and discourage conversion of year-round housing to short-term rentals or second homes. So that was added. The suggestion here is to add that to goal four. Does that make sense in terms of picking up on the spirit of that conversation and adding that here? I'm kind of looking for, is the board in agreement with this addition?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Jason, go ahead.
My, I want, I like to hear what everybody thinks about putting the second homes on there. I'm 100% backing on the short-term, converting to short-term rentals, but I'm not so sure about second homes. Is there anybody else fine on that?
I, I, I struggle on, well, let me say, I appreciate the sentiment of the concept. I struggle with the execution of the concept. So what policies are we actually talking about that would create, are possible to create those kinds of incentives? And I think I do, you know, support, I think we talked about, you know, this addressing the middle-income market and we want those homes to stay in the pool and available for year-round families and not be sold out for second homes. But I struggle as a whole with the sentiment of, it's one thing to have the goal to discourage it, but is that actually a path to success? Is, are there things that we can really do that will, that will prevent those things from happening?
Yeah, just from a feasibility perspective, how do you discourage people from having a second home? Matt?
I'm, I'm not sure if the wording is quite right on this, but the goal, I think, is to look at what are all the options to, you know, there, if some municipalities are not allowing, you know, Airbnb and short-term rentals in certain parts of their, of their town or of their city. Other, you know, we, we at one point had a town meeting article that almost passed that said, second dwelling should be used for, you know, year-round and workforce housing, which was the original intent of our second dwelling way back when it was started. So there's a bunch of things we could do. We could change tax incentives, tax structures, so people pay less taxes if their home is rented that way. I mean, there's a whole host of options, but they need to get on the table and for us to talk about them.
Yeah, okay. So the option piece, I think, is what the the housing task force is working on. Dom, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead. I, but I want to, I want to get at the specific point that Jason's asking about, which is the second home. So Dawn, please go ahead. And then Kristi.
Go first if you want. I mean, I was just, I'm very much on the same page as Melissa is I, I need to understand what the actual action steps are because we've been talking about this stuff for years and years. And I mean, frankly, our taxes aren't high enough to really give people an incentive to, um, to to convert their second dwellings to a year-round rental. And it maybe in some, maybe in some cases they would be. And I am all for encouraging more year-round housing. And, um, and I don't have a problem with the with the discussion on on short-term rentals. I think it's going to be really hard to pick out any areas at this stage where they wouldn't be allowed. So many year-round families rely on some portion of short-term rentals to make ends meet. And I just, um, I, I like the idea of encouraging, as we had in this goal before, the use of secondary dwellings as year-round rentals. I'm not, I really need to understand how we're going to implement discouraging conversion of your own house into short-term rentals or second homes. And the short-term rentals, I'm more comfortable with in terms of the discourage than the second homes. The second homes feels like shut shutting out a number of people who do really feel like Nantucket is home for them as well, just because they have a residence elsewhere. More and more, we're seeing people who spend six or nine months out of the year here or who have the intention of, um, of using a home for a period of time, maybe doing a few rentals and then retiring here. And a lot of those people contribute immensely to the community, both, both with their skill set and financially to many, many nonprofits and so forth. So I just want to be careful about what we're really trying to improve in terms of quality of life on the island.
Thank you. So Kristi and then Melissa, I think I saw you give me a wave and Matt also. So Kristi first.
Thank you, Jason, for pointing out the second homes. I don't think that that is what we meant and discussed on Tuesday. I think Dawn made a good point that, you know, they're really important to the island's sustainability of the island, not our community. I think getting hung up on how we're going to discourage the conversion is is not really what I would want to focus on right now. Wouldn't, with the first goal being identify incentives, it's not, we didn't come up with those incentives. We're leaving it to Tucker and the housing department to figure those out. So I think we could still say it's to identify incentives and ways to discourage short-term rentals. I think what we're going to see with COVID, or what we've already seen, is a huge surge in buying up the market and nothing under a million. And I think if, even though short-term rentals are a huge, will be a huge part of our tax income revenue basis.
Okay, I lost a, I lost the last piece, sorry. Okay, so I'm trying to work with the language a little bit, maybe get there closer. So kind of give me some feedback as we go. Melissa? You had your hand up.
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember if I was scratching my head or wanting to say something. I'm going to, I'm going to.
You're going to pass it back to Matt? All right, Matt?
Yeah, I just, I think, I think I agree with Kristi, how we do it, you know, leave the details for later, but the, but we are, you know, the year-round and the working class are being priced out of this market. And in home and neighborhoods, we never thought would end up with, you know, two and a half, three and a half million dollar homes and pools are the target right now. And so I think that we would be, we have to, you know, we all, I think, know that or feel that. So we, you know, we have to put, see what their options are to sort of try to eat, you know, try to make this a fair playing field in some manner.
Okay. Melissa, that looks definitive now.
That is definitive.
All right.
I really like the language you put up, Julia. Rather than discourage is the verb, explore is the verb. So explore options for discouraging. I prefer the word limiting because I'm, I'm not sure we want to be, I'm not sure I agree with the strong sentiment of discouraging. But, um, I agree, I agree conceptually with the idea that we have a sort of crisis in our market where we're pricing out people. And I, so I like that verb change.
Okay. Um, others, yes, please. Rachel?
I just want to note, there was a comment through the chat from Mary Longacre. And she asked, you mentioned language. Second homes and secondary dwellings can, are sometimes two very different things. So it might help clarify what term. So maybe the terms are being used interchangeably. So I'm not sure if that helps the conversation or not. But there is a section where it says second dwellings in the beginning is the goal. And then when you refer to second homes, are those two different concepts?
Okay. And you're seeing the chat, but I don't think anyone else. Oh, yes, we can see the chat. Okay, I think.
I think it was just directly to me, though.
Just directed to you. Okay. And is Mary a resident or a staff member, just so we know? Pardon me?
Resident.
Yeah, I think, I mean, and I, I appreciate everyone's help because that's what this is trying to be helpful. And I think what we had said was we'll do public input at the, at the end.
Okay.
Thanks. So the way this is written now, are you all comfortable with the revision to this goal language kind of going forward this way? I've seen some head knobs. Okay, thumbs up. Matt, works for you? Yep. Melissa, Katie, Dawn, you're comfortable enough with this language?
The only thing I would say is I kind of agree with Mary that these are two different, two very different things. Probably shouldn't be in the same sentence.
Okay, so is it a second goal?
I mean, I think it could be in the same goal potentially, but not, but I think that you should do an entirely separate sentence to explore options for limiting the conversion of year-round housing to short-term rentals.
Okay. That works? All right. So that gets us through the housing, the existing housing goals. And there was three potential new goals under housing that, and I, I want to acknowledge I have a suggestion on a rewrite of one. So for develop a program to increase homeownership opportunities for middle-income workers. Someone suggested using the word strategy instead. So develop a strategy to increase homeownership opportunities for middle-income workers. What I want to say right now is, I'm not asking for everyone to tell me if they agree with these or not yet. What I want to know is if the language is right. So when we go to prioritize or agree with them in terms of how they're written, yes, but not tell me that it's your priority or not yet. So we're, we're not saying these are part of the strategic plan yet. We're just refining the language of some of the ideas that you all had on Tuesday. So first potential new one, develop a strategy to increase homeownership opportunities for middle-income workers. Identify opportunities to support affordable housing objectives within the town budget and explore development of emergency housing contingency plans. So those were three goals. Melissa?
Thank you. I had a suggested edit for the third bullet point.
Okay.
Which would be explore development of housing contingency plans during, and I said states of question mark emergency or during emergencies because I, I think that, um, at least in my mind, that was the intention was that we would have as part of our emergency preparedness contingency plans for housing options like we've needed in COVID.
Okay, great. You all have to remind me. I'm going to have to come back and grab this language later. Kelsey, will you grab it for the prioritization exercise? I'm sure she will.
Yes, I, I'm getting it.
Thank you. Takes a village sometimes. Okay, so we have those three that we'll be considering under housing. Then, um, transportation was next.
A quick question on housing, if I can.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
What if I, I look at those three and I, I think that we've got enough already and don't need any of those? How do I, when we vote, can I say that, you know, offices doing the top part and the Board of Health and the Health Department can be doing the other and move on? How do I say that?
So what we're going to do when we, when we get to the end of this is there's nine possible things that you all are considering and I'm going to ask you for three. And so the way you would say, I don't think we need to do this, is not, not rank them as one of your three. Okay? Okay. Transportation, no change to the success statement or the aspirational statement, excuse me. Libby, you have a question?
I'm really sorry. It's back on housing, though.
That's fine. No, you can go now. It's fine.
I, that last bullet there, explore development of housing contingency plan during emergencies. I don't know if this is the place, but I, as a potential implementer of this or whatever, I would want to know what an emergency is and housing contingency plans for who?
Yeah. Yep. And, you know, I don't know if you all remember kind of the steps that we, we go through to to refine this. But, um, if I go back two years to when we first kind of put the meat on the bones of your strategic plan, we had working group meetings. And one of the first exercises that we went through and many of the select board members were assigned to different goals, we answered some important questions. The first one is, you know, what problem are we solving and then what does success look like? And so during what kind of emergencies and who for who is exactly the type of, you know, what is this problem that we're solving? So that would be the first step if it makes the cut towards implementation. So we will not do, we will not get to that step tonight. We will, I feel like if we can narrow the list down to something you all are more comfortable with testing and we can, you know, going forward, then we've done good. But if I said, okay, now let's dive into each of these, I think you would turn your Zooms off on me. So. All right. Transportation. No change to goal one, two, three. So no, there, this was the input that we organized around transportation. Some ideas about parking management. Here's some ideas, some, you know, some conversation about year-round bus service. And then, you know, how can we use our funds from the short-term rental tax to provide infrastructure and transportation options? So what I have noted here is that we don't have a new proposed goal, but this information would be given to the transportation working group and they would take it into consideration as they're working on implementation. Does that make sense to you all as a strategy? Okay. All right. Environmental leadership.
Oh, sorry, before we leave.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to widen the, I'm the whole year-round bus thing. I think the year-on-bus thing, we have to know that if it, whether it makes sense first. And so, you know, and be, and what Jason was talking about is, is sort of micro buses, on-demand transportation in the winter. You know, we're running fixed routes with very few people taking them, it seems. You know, we're running fixed routes with very few people taking them, it seems. And so, you know, if there's a way to write, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not 100% in the year round fixed route business, but if we can find a way, you know, like Jason was talking about to, to check, you know, to do this efficiently and affordably.
Gotcha. I'm adding that, I'm trying to add that sentiment in here, Matt, from, from the note you sent earlier. Sorry, I didn't catch doing that. So again, additional input and the piece of it is, it's not just year round bus service on fixed route. It's what about these micro transit on demand shuttles?
Yeah, or, or it's, or it's having, you know, it's subsidizing taxi service to take people door to door. So they can still go to the hospital and do all the things they have to do. And we don't run a, you know, $700,000 shortfall for the winter.
Got it. Okay. Tried to capture that there. And again, the strategy is we give this to the transportation working group for their consideration and exploration. Does that make sense? Okay. Anybody else have anything on this one in terms of making sure we're passing along the correct sentiments? Okay. Environmental leadership, no change to the aspirational statement. What I, what I thought made sense, and again, I, you all know what you've been dealing with, with PFAS, but I, I just, I added this here to goal two, to incorporate plans for remediation and transparency with regard to PFAS. And again, we would, the idea is we would share this with the environmental leadership working group. And they would, that would be part of what they're exploring. Does this, is this consistent with what you all would expect and where you would expect it to be? And it sounded like those things that you're already doing. And so it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily a new goal. It's amplifying an important issue.
It's Matt again, Julia.
Yeah.
Incorporate plans, does that mean the work group will come out with their plans for how we're gonna handle PFAS? Or does that mean, what does that mean?
I think it would be develop them and share them is kind of how I interpret it. Janet?
I've not been in the PFAS group discussions that's taking place with the airport folks. But I wonder if that's a place where this, this part of this goal would actually be directed to them to implement and come up with that plan. I guess I'd turn to Libby to, for response to that question.
Yeah, the airport only has one part of this. And we have engaged a consulting firm to do an island wide risk assessment for where other sources of PFAS might be throughout the entire island. And it's a, it's a phased contract. So another phase would be developing a plan for remediation with regard to how we're gonna deal with PFAS. And already part of the contract is public outreach. And I, I don't know if the word transparency is in there, but it's certainly the intent to be as transparent as possible. But I, I don't mind having some wordings like, wording like this in here to do what Julia said, which is to emphasize that it's, it's an issue and, and we're dealing with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we're in good shape here. You guys stop me. We can go back anytime. Don't, you know, defer there. Efficient town operations. Okay. Again, no change to the aspirational statement. We have the existing two goals. And then we have a couple of potential new goals. So the first one is communication. So there was a lot of conversation about communication. I think some of it again, kind of was amplified by our precursor conversation on COVID and the pandemic and protests and kind of you all were feeling the need perhaps for some kind of a communications officer or someone who has these designated responsibility as their job. So the way I tried to capture it was, okay, come up with a plan, what is, you know, a comprehensive communication plan for the town. And then evaluate the need for a position that is your chief communication officer, public information officer. And then have some clear guidance, policies and procedures on how to deal with communications when you're in states of emergency. Does that sound like, again, not saying that it is your highest priority, but did we capture the sentiment of what you're looking for in, with this potential goal, if there's, if there's interest in it? Yeah, Jason?
Was this, would this encompass boards and committees and all that stuff too? Or is that a separate item?
When you say boards and committees, what do you mean? I don't know. I'm sorry.
Well, one of our priorities, one of the things we talked about is how the board communicates with the public, how the, how the select board communicates with town admin, stuff like that, things that will be on us coming up with our own plan.
Yeah, so I.
Is that under this?
So I actually, I think I captured that here. So with the, with a separate goal. So one is about kind of, I'll use the word corporate, but it's the, you know, the, the apparatus of town government. What's its communication plan? Who does what, when? And, and do we have a chief spokesperson? That's one person. Or I think right now you all designate someone who does it in conjunction with their other responsibilities. So that's how I captured that one. And then I did the other piece separate. So are you good with these thoughts here? Again, the idea, if you prioritize it, we give it to a working group. And they go through the process of answering the questions and exploring what the problem is we're trying to solve, what does success look like? And they go through this, this process of implementation. Yes, Jason?
My only thought is just to put one more bullet under this for what, what your next slide is. I feel like it goes underneath this. It's not as, as, as big as, just a suggestion. I mean.
You mean the next one should just be part of this?
Well, the next slide you threw out there was almost on the select board, right? Communications?
Yeah. So I, so, but what I, what I was hearing here was a couple of things. So there's, you know, one kind of communication is, it's in that I, that I think we're, I was thinking about in the prior slide is when the town needs to communicate with the residents. It could be that it's a select board person who is, is asked to do that. It could be a police lieutenant. I mean, it could be the town manager or an assistant town manager or, you know, Roberto. I'm sure he's done a lot of that. So, you know, it could be any of those things. This one is about your all's communication. It's about how you communicate with one another. It's about how you communicate with your constituents. And it's about how you communicate with the administrative apparatus and the, you know, in town admin. And provide direction and communication. You know, I think that's, that's a piece of the frustration for, you know, when you're on a board. It's hard because you, you want to do something and you, you think it's a great idea. And I'm sure it is. I'm sure they all are. But three of you are the ones who direct the, the town manager. And so kind of wrapping that up and understanding that corporately is kind of what this was about.
Okay.
Okay. So given that, do you still, is there anything you would want to add to this possible statement? Or is it, we're making sense there? And I'm looking at your comments, Matt, and I don't know that.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll try to, yeah, I'm gonna try to speak to them.
Okay.
From my perspective, we need more than just sort of better communication. It's, you know, sometimes the more complicated something is, the less information we have as a board to then make the policy. And so, you know, and, and, and I'll use some of the COVID stuff of, you know, like the enforcement or the planning for what we were gonna do downtown. Took three or four weeks and, and a lot of, you know, before it was done, you know, we needed plan. Sometimes we need to get plans that are written detailing who's gonna do what, when, why, how, what's the cost, what are the benchmarks? So that, you know, A, the, the act of doing that is great for the, you know, the staff, et cetera, when they're doing it. And it's great for us because then we understand what the, what is gonna happen and when. And if things need to be improved, we can do it. Too often, I think the more difficult something is, the less likely we are to really write out what we're gonna do. And so, so I'm, you know, if this, if these goals get us, you know, more of that, then I'm all on board. And if not, I, I think it's, you know, and, and, you know, sort of policy for the, the town is, for the select board is great. What's the policy on how the town is going to relay stuff to us?
Right.
That needs to happen as well.
Yeah. So the idea, and again, I tried to take this and shape it. And so part of it is how I'm interpreting it. But to me, when, if you have policies and procedures for those types of communication, that's what it is. It is a plan that you, that you execute, that you pull, you pull off the shelf when you have a pandemic or a nor'easter or whatever. And it, it, it has those scenarios in it to provide guidance. Or you have an arrest or a fire or a sewer main break, all the things that you deal with on a regular basis.
Does it even have to be a, you know, an emergency? Can it just be, here's our plan for parking enforcement? Here's our plan for whatever this summer. You know, are we, do, do we, are we only dealing with emergencies or are we dealing with, you know, this is how we operate?
So I think a, a comprehensive communication plan addresses all of the operations. And you, somebody who is on point to help guide when you need to make a statement about things. So these sub bullets, we're just trying to pick up specific issues that people raised during the meeting. But to me, a comprehensive communication plan would, would help with that.
I don't wanna, I don't want to delay, you know, delay. I don't want to beat this. I don't know if, again, I don't know it's just communication. It's not, you know, it's making sure that we have a level of detail that we can then make, you know, prudent decisions upon. You know, a level of analysis and detail. So I don't know if this bullet gets to my point, but maybe it's a different bullet.
Yeah. So what, what I'm hearing you talk about is not just about communications. It's about decision making. It's about both, you know, policymaking, providing you all the guidance at meetings, the information that you need to make a decision. And it also sounds a little bit like you're asking to know what went into the decision that perhaps one of the, either Libby or one of her cabinet members made and why they're doing it. You know, why are you doing it like that type of a thing that you are wanting to see a layer behind? Am I, am I capturing that accurately?
Yeah, that, that's fairly, yes. You know, and, and documentation and in writing, here's what we plan to do and here's why.
So I, and I, I hear you saying that. I don't think that's a communication plan. To me, that is, that is a separate issue. And so I'm, I'm kind of, I'm not sure how to, Kelsey is gonna, taking some notes and we'll kind of have this as, you know, that this is an issue that you share. Do others share this as a concern? Like, is there something missing here or am I missing something in terms of understanding the context for this? Is this a sentiment that is shared by other members of the board? Yeah, Jason?
I don't know if I share it to the level of Matt. But I see it as, what I said on Tuesday is this, you know, we have city level problems and we're in this small form of government. I'm not making an excuse, Matt, but I think this is, it's a good conversation to have of how to transfer information and how, how to keep us at the policymaking level, not get into the details and the weeds, but also have enough information we feel comfortable making the decisions. It's a, it's a weird balance. And I know, and it, it's changing over, you know, every 10 years. I haven't been doing this that long, but it's just, it's so complex. So how do we, how much do we get into the weeds and still make good policy decisions? It's kind of what I, what I'm hearing overall. And I don't have the answer. I think it's a good conversation to have. I don't know if this should go in our strategic goal.
Right. And I, you know, to me, that's a piece of, if we were, you know, if we were in a room together for a half a day and we were doing some governance work and talk about expectations. I mean, to me, this is part of that. This is about what you expect from the town admin. And it's getting consensus on what, you know, how do you balance board members who frankly have different informational needs and interests? And, you know, some people like 20 page papers and some people like, you know, three bullet points. And navigating that is challenging for a town manager or for, and for an organization. So the, the difficulty is exactly as Jason said, balancing it. And my guess is it also varies by issue. Some people are gonna care a lot more about one thing and want more detail. And other people are, you know, that's not their baby. They're just, they're not interested. So I think that's more work we might be able to do in a different setting. Jason?
I, I, I do think it is a different thing. And I don't think it's just communication. But I wanted to point out that our agenda item summaries that are in our packets have gotten really, been very helpful and been very good this last couple of years. So like things are heading in that direction. So I'll, I'll stop talking about it, but somehow could we maybe keep working on it this year?
Yep. And I, I think as I, I'm trying to, my nan ticket pile right here on my thing. I think we've had some conversations about this a little bit before. And so dusting that off and testing it, okay, we've experienced this. How are we doing? What do we need to change? But again, I don't think that's strategic plan type of conversation. So. Anyone else want to chime in on this? Are we kind of good with that as the kind of how we will address Matt's needs and issues? And then this is what these goals are saying. Melissa, I saw maybe a wave or a fly. I'm not sure. Flies make around a lot longer these days.
Um, I, I really do. I, I appreciate Jason's input and I, I do feel like it's, you know, while I, I, I appreciate and see Matt's sentiment and I, and I know that you've been consistently dogged for, in particular during COVID, you know, seeing plans, strategies, information that certain benchmarks have been met, so on and so forth. And, you know, I, I think it must be very challenging to have five different board members with a different set of expectations. And I'm not, I want to be careful that what we're doing improves. And I, I think to Matt's point, why it would sit here is because it improves communication with the board. And so what we're really talking about, when we talk about a communications plan, I think you mentioned this, Matt, is there's so many different layers to it. It's how is information, particularly in emergency, getting from town administration or the emergency EOC to board members? What are we doing with that information when we're requested outside information? Like, there's just a lot of variables. But that's why I think a plan can be comprehensive and help address some of those things. I don't know that it will necessarily get down to that nitty gritty expectations level that you're talking about, Matt. But I do think a communications plan will at least lay out agreed upon expectations for how information is being passed ultimately from a source to the public. And, and obviously along the way, we use that information to make decisions. So I, I kind of waffle, I guess.
And this is why this isn't easy. So I'm gonna bring us back, make sure the goal.
Really sorry, real quick. It's, I think it is more governance. I think it is more giving us the ability to know whether, you know, what was planned was, you know, and, and benchmarks, what was planned was done. I use it in my, I'm pretty simple. I use it in my business. I don't, I don't change much. If I'm not changing anything in my business, I don't write it out. I don't do that. But if we're adding a product, if we're adding, you know, a location or another line, we'll sit down and we'll go through the, you know, the steps that we will do. And we'll assign them, who's gonna do what, when, where? And then we meet, you know, maybe daily, maybe once a week to make sure we're on track and those things are taken care of. And when I don't do that, it's kind of up in the air and it's kind of, you know, squishy and no accountability. When I do it, it works great. And we get something done. And so that's, I'm, so it's sort of governance. It's sort of process. You know, so that, and if I give my, if I give the staff the opportunity to say they're, they're too busy or they'll, they'll pick the things they want to do. You know, they won't do the things we need to do to, to, to do what we, what our goal was.
Yeah, well.
What sort of governance?
Yeah, it is, it's governance. It, it's governance in how, what type of information you would like to perform what I call the oversight role. You know, there's the six roles exercise we didn't get to. But that's one of the things that you all do is provide oversight for the town, for the town government. And then it's the, the types of things that you're mentioning, you know, as you are the executive of your company. That's your management system. And Libby has a management system. And, and, you know, even the strategic plan working groups and that whole implementation process that Janet coordinates. So there is accountability back to the board are pieces of that. So. So there is accountability back to the board, are pieces of that. So, um, but I think it's, your, your interest is a little more broad. So I, 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 though we will, we have it captured, it will be part of the record and, and hopefully we can have that conversation.
Yeah, we can move on.
Okay. So, um, we have these two potential goals under efficient town government. So the one before about communications, and this was about the select board operating procedures. Okay? Does this language here make sense? All right. I can tell you're studiously reading. I'm getting some thumbs up. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. And then the third one, um, evaluate options for shifting to proactive enforcement for code enforcement, conservation restrictions, environmental regulations, et cetera. So again, this was an issue Matt raised about enforcement. And of course, the services you provide are what you are funded to provide. And so kind of what are the, what are your options in terms of enforcement staff? So this, this would be the potential goal here. Is it captured accurately? The sentiment? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Got some thumbs up. They work for me. All right. Um, another one, update the emergency preparedness and response plans. So incorporating the, the learning from COVID, um, enhancing focus on communicating with the board, clarifying roles again during the emergency, what the board does, what the staff does, which staff does what, and incorporate scenario plans. Make sense? I think it captures what you were saying. Yep. Good. Okay. Good. Thank you all. Okay. And then we move into, again, that was just my notes for how we captured it. So now we move into quality of life. Um, in the overall statement for this area, we added the word, we changed diverse to inclusive. So that's how the sentence leads now. Nantucket is a vibrant and inclusive community. So that's the aspirational statement. Um, and in terms of goals, come on, sorry. We have a couple of potential new goals. Why is this so hard? Evaluate partnership oper-, I think there's one more before this whole one. Sorry. Develop a comprehensive plan to drive service delivery through the lens of equity and inclusion. Melissa, your hand is up.
Yeah, I had another suggested at it. Thank you, Julia, for the, um, this goal. Develop a comprehensive plan to address and ensure equity throughout town policies and procedures. And I'm, I'm not sure what my, what my colleagues think about that, but I, um, the phrase to drive service delivery felt a little unclear to me. So I was trying to, to play with that a little bit. I don't know what everyone else thinks about that suggestion.
Getting a thumbs up. Okay. Go with that. And then the bullet points under here are taken straight from what you all have said you're going to do. So we've just packed that in here. Again, we'll provide the goal team this information. They develop an implementation plan around it. But, but I know you're also on your way here, right? Okay. And then the next goal is to evaluate partnership opportunities that promote healthy, active living and provide facilities, programs and support for vulnerable populations. This was pulling a couple of different things together. Does it make sense to you all the way it was captured? Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, so that's that. So we have nine potential goals. And Kelsey has them worded correctly, I feel confidently on her screen. I'm going to stop sharing. And what I'm going to ask you all to do is, um, is prioritize of these nine, what are your top three? So Kelsey, do you want to share your screen and, uh, tell the board how they will do this?
Yeah.
And it is just the five board members that will do the prioritization.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me get my PowerPoint going. I'm going to turn my video back off because I found I have trouble sharing my screen at the same time.
No problem. It was nice to see your face.
Okay, just a minute. So in order for us to do this polling, um, what I'm going to do is ask you guys to follow the instructions on the screen, which are to open a browser. So you can do this on your phone or, um, on your computer, if you can pull up a separate browser or, um, like on a tablet or something. And you just go to ttpoll.com. And then once you're there, um, there's a place to put in the session ID and it's simply Nantucket. And, uh, you can, it's not case sensitive. Um, so you can type it in with capitals, however you'd like. Um, once you click to join, um, it'll ask for your name. You can leave that blank and just click join without filling any of that in. We don't need your, your names. And I believe once you get there, it should actually load this slide. Or it'll show you a little clock that says polling is closed.
It's showing your slide.
Okay, perfect. I'll give you guys a few minutes. Um, what I'm actually going to go ahead and do is advance to our next slide, which is where you'll get to vote. Um, so that as everybody gets to it, you can kind of start voting. So here's the updated language for those nine. And, um, what you'll see on the browser is an option to select between one and nine. You can select three. So you'll, if you click on any of the numbers corresponding with the list, then, um, it'll kind of select and darken for you. And if you decide you messed it up, there's a clear all. You can also just kind of click through three, it'll select the last three.
Is that intuitive to you? While you're seeing it, you can just go right down to the bottom, darken the numbers that are your top three?
It looks like at least a couple of people have successfully done so.
Excellent.
Yep.
We've got four, we've got five.
Is everyone happy with their decision, their choice? Go ahead, Melissa.
I'm old. It's taken me a minute to find it. I got it now, though.
Okay.
But I've got a sixth person, it looks like, has done it now.
Um, let's see if I can pull up.
Is there a save button or anything? Or are we just?
It'll, yeah, there's no save button. It's kind of, um, basically just whatever you select will stay.
Okay, we're back to five. We're good.
Okay.
Now it's at six again.
Yeah, it's still six.
Now five.
Yeah, I just mine, so.
You know, it might be mine because I have it pulled up. It's empty.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, alrighty. Is everyone okay? Okay. I'll give you more time, Melissa. It's a lot of words to read through. Okay, thumbs up for Melissa. Everybody else good? Okay.
Okay, so one goal, the new housing one, four is the communic-, so the two, to be eight, which is the comprehensive plan to address equity and then nine partnerships that promote healthy, active living. So those would be the three that would, that seem to have some energy going forward. Okay, so one, eight and nine. So what this, so how we would do this then is these are the things that we would say where your all's energy is as a group. There might be one person who's interested and a couple of others, maybe two, but, you know, as a group, this is where your energy is. And so, um, we would add these items to the strategic plan working groups tasks and ask them to kind of begin that process of implementation. So that's what I'm kind of suggesting for next step. But I want to, I, I want to be respectful to Dawn. You mentioned how you're not sure how comfortable you would be kind of getting to this place today. And if you want to kind of hold here before and, and propose something else for next steps. So I am, I, I want to go back to you. And then Kelsey, you can.
It's not a bad next step. I think I just maybe wanted to try to meet in person before we fully memorialize this and put it into our written plan and present it to the community. But they may or may not be an option. Um, I, I do feel like this was a little bit more effective. I like this polling thing. I feel like that, that was missing a little bit of trying to, how do we put our, put together, what are the most important pieces? So this, I don't know how everyone else feels.
So other thoughts on next steps? Yeah, Melissa, go ahead. And Kelsey, I think you could stop sharing right now. I think that would be fine. Let them, we'll have bigger, bigger faces that way.
Okay.
Um, I really appreciated the poll and I, I like, um, the, the place of consensus we got to. I, I share your wish and also your concern, Dawn. It would be really nice to be in a room and feel like we were having, um, I don't know, more fluid conversation than Zoom allows for. But, um, you know, I think that strategic plans are living, breathing documents. And this is a really good next step. I, I wonder if there are things that were on the plan or goals that were on the plan that could be, have been accomplished or could be amended if we're talking about the next phase so that we're not just piling goal onto goal onto goal. That would be my only other thought.
Yeah. So kind of how this integrates with the existing plan that you had the update on? Because none of those are, I don't believe, are done. Is that correct? We've made progress on them. They're not done. And so we're adding new things kind of again with this three-year horizon. And the idea is that we update all of the work plans with kind of, you know, here's the progress we can make during time. So that might be important information on there to help you all understand just what implementation looks like. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's, I worry, I worry sometimes that this process doesn't get us to the big picture. You know, so sometimes, let's, just budgeting, for example, I think we're going to have a really tough time budgeting for a few years in prioritizing, and that isn't reflected in this document.
Okay. Other thoughts? Yeah, Melissa.
I guess I agree with you, Matt. And I also think that strategic plans aren't necessarily meant to be realistic and tied to budgets. They're, they're meant to be aspirational. And so it's really for us to take those goals and things that we've identified as being important. And then when we come to where the rubber meets the road and decision-making, make sure that as we're prioritizing our budget, that these sentiments that we've encapsulated here are reflected in, in how we're making policy and financial choices. So I, I see what you're saying and I also see that this is an important step to help guide our decision-making when it comes to those, those sort of budgetary and or policy decisions. Because I agree with you, you know, these, these are aspirational and they may not be practical in that.
Yeah. You know what? Yes, Dawn, thank you.
I mean, these may not all actually cost, you know, a lot of town financial, financial resources necessarily. I mean, definitely staffing resources for implementation. But, um, and I, and, and also, I mean, I know that we've been very worried about the budget, but I don't think we're actually seeing a real decrease in our budget now that we've seen how the summer has turned out. Um, and we're getting additional revenues from the short-term rental tax. So Libby might want to elaborate on that a little bit more, but I, I, and it depends on how long COVID continues and what next season maybe looks like. But with all of our revenue coming from property ta-, the majority of our revenue coming from property taxes, I don't, um, I don't think that we're really in as dire of a situation as we were worried about at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree from the town perspective, we're, we're not, Dawn, but I think from a personal perspective and the ability to pay, there's a lot of talk of override this and override that and our tax rate is low. Uh, and I think there's people on, on fixed incomes and there are people who had a really rough year. You know, some of them are calling, have been calling me and I'm trying to help them through it. And so I think that's the, you know, that, I'm worried about them. I'm not necessarily worried about the town, you know, but I am worried about the town.
Worried about adding to the tasking.
I'm worried about the town having enough employees to do the, you know, to do the tasks that we need done, the children's beach, et cetera. So.
Yeah. Well, and I think you saw, you know, kind of even the, um, some of your existing strategic plan, the one way, you know, like the parking coordinator position was not, was unfunded. Um, and so that's integral to some of the progress you all want to make in, in parking. And you won't be able to do those things until that position is hired. And so there is some relationship back. I think there's a pretty clear message when you, um, when you say, you know, the, the diversity and inclusion and equity piece is your highest priority. Well, you're, are one of your highest priorities, that, that's something that they're going to make space for in the budget, that that's just a given, that, that we understand where the board is coming from. So I, I do think it can provide that high-level direction, but it won't address the, the immediate concerns that some people might have. Anybody else on where we are? So my, what, this is what we'll do. We'll get this written up. And I've been in communication with, with Janet and with Libby and I work with Rachel and Greg and everyone to make sure that we have a plan for how the working groups will receive this information and kind of take it to that next step for you all. Um, and then perhaps there's an opportunity in a different universe that doesn't have so many, so many meeting constraints where we can get together and I think have a robust conversation about governance, which will help, um, and make sure everybody's on the page, same page with the strategic plan. Does that sound like a good, good next step? And so if we ended a little bit early, you're not going to be mad at me, right? Not at all. Right? All right. How about we just say one word to end the meeting, how you're feeling? Dawn, you get to go first or last?
I'll go last.
All right. So I'm going by my screen. Janet? I get the Brady Bunch here.
Ready to go.
Nice. Melissa?
Hopeful.
Hopeful. Yeah, you can use it too. That's all right. Kristy? Kristy?
Excited.
Excited. Libby?
Uh, can't wait.
Jason?
Hopeful.
Matt?
Relieved, it's over. I thought you were going to say that, Libby.
I jokingly say relieved.
All right. Dawn, take us home.
Enthusiastic.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your patience and, and trying this in a new way. And I'll hope we can be together in person sometime soon. All the best.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Kelsey.
Bye, guys.